Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your attendance at the May 13th, 2019 Board Meeting. All members are in attendance. Please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic forward which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Would someone like to move approval of our agenda for the evening?
Someone.
Wait a second. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. We have quite the recognition of students, staff, and public tonight, so let's get right into it. We'll start with the District Food Drive 2019 results. We are very excited to hear the results of this year's annual district-wide food drive. And I'd like to invite Molly Luwak, PTSA Council President, to speak about the food drive and present the We Believe Alliance Food Drive Trophy to Ridgeview.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the school board, as President of the PTSA Council, it is my pleasure to extend our sincere gratitude to our students, parents, and staff who gave so generously to this year's 11th Annual District-Wide Food Drive. This event is organized and led by the PTSA Council and the School Board's Youth Advisory Council. This year, our schools, departments, and business and civic partners collected nearly 14,000 pounds of food and $9,800 in cash for a combined total of 62,753 pounds when the cash was converted to pounds of food. Grateful for the 15 businesses and groups that helped our 20 participating district sites in this year's food drive, including Bloomington Smiles Dentistry, Boyum Bar and Sheer, Christ the King Lutheran Church, City of Bloomington Fire Stations, CrossFit 952, General Dynamics, Lunsen Byerlees, Martin Luther Campus, North Star Tavern, Quality Bicycle Products, RGC Gymnastics, Thorood Inc., The Toro Company, Wells Fargo Bank, and Wooden Hill Brewing. Ridgeview Elementary School, along with their business partner, Thorood Inc., topped all schools with a combined total of 9,313 pounds. I am pleased to award the We Believe Alliance's World Record School District-Wide Food Trophy to Principal Steve Abrahamson, PTA Co-Presidents Michelle Myron and Stacy Connolly, Council Rep. Stephanie Johnson, and fabulous children of Ridgeview. Congratulations.
Daniel, hold on to it. Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board, thank you so much for an opportunity like this. Thank you, Ridgeview. Thank you, Thorood Incorporated, a world-class company here in Bloomington that has helped us for the last three years in this kind of event. You know, a food drive is an opportunity to draw people together and really create a common goal, an opportunity to really help make things better for our community, for our kids. And really, a competition like this really helps motivate kids, and it's really a lot of fun. It gives schools an opportunity to do special things, some fun things. I'd say that the Ridgeview kids had a chance to shave my head, but they would know I'd be lying because I don't have anything left to shave. But anyways, we had a lot of fun, but really, the winner in something like this is our community, and the winner is Veep. And so, on behalf, really, of all of the schools together, we're really thankful that we can do this for our community and really draw that and create that partnership for everybody. And so, thank you very much.
The annual food drive has now collected over 269 tons since it began in 2009. All donations go to our friends at the Bloomington-based Veep. With us tonight is Veep's Chief Executive Officer, Joe McDonald, and Senior Advancement Associate, Kyle Nelson.
Hello. I'm Kyle Nelson. I'm a Veep. And once again, we just want to thank you for your partnership and just the way, oh, this is stupid, just the way that Bloomington Public Schools has supported Veep the past 11 years. It's really amazing. And just a couple of things about Veep. So, clients at Veep are just like you and I. You know, in this community, it really is a hub of hospitality. And so, you could be encountering a Veep client at your local Starbucks, or maybe someone who's ringing up your groceries at Target. So, it's pretty cool that even some of the kids at the schools have benefited from Veep. And I think it's really neat that the community then can come around clients and neighbors and make sure that everyone is provided for. So, thank you for your partnership. Something just to note is that 15% of Veep's donations in 2018 came from community food drives, like the one that Bloomington Schools holds each year. So, food drives are a really vital part of what Veep needs. And, oh, food drives provide a really good variety for our shelves. You know, we get lots of different food from different sources, but when you guys are picking out the food that goes to our clients, it allows our clients to have a little bit more of a dignified shopping experience and really to be able to choose what is best for their family. So, thank you for choosing Veep and holding the food drive year after year.
And one thing I just wanted to add, I've been the CEO for about five months now, and I'm still doing a lot of learning, but one of the things I love about Veep is that our mission statement starts with the word "together." Our mission is that together we create pathways to stronger, more hopeful communities through access to healthy food, affordable housing stability, and supportive services. And I think this food drive is a great example of the power of togetherness. We know at Veep, we can multiply our impact the more that our community gets behind us to serve our community. And as I said, this is a great example, and just to share a few things that you're helping us do in impacting our community. In 2018, Veep served 6,700 households, which made up more than 20,000 people. We gave away 3.6 million pounds of food, half of which was fresh produce, and we also provided direct financial assistance of $140,000 to keep 300 people secure in their homes through a financial crisis. And we're able to do that because of the support of Bloomington Public Schools, the business community, the faith community. So, again, on behalf of our staff, our board, our volunteers, but most importantly, our clients who receive the benefits of drives like this, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, if I may, at 7 o'clock tonight, our fifth graders started their last concert, their band concert, choir concert. That's going on right now. They helped provide the leadership for this. And so, if I could scoot out of here, I could head right over to school and still make part of that concert. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Okay. Next, we have the Human Rights Commission 2019 Unity Day, or Diversity Day, the contest winners. And Deana Wade-Ardley, Director of the Office of Educational Equity, and Angela Conkle, City of Bloomington Human Rights Youth Commissioner, are going to say a few words.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, Executive Board, and Board Directors, and families and friends of Bloomington Public Schools, I am so excited to be up here. We are moving from diversity to unity, which includes everybody. We want to be a district where everyone is important. My son has a saying that says, he treats everybody like somebody's somebody. Think about that. Somebody's somebody. So, if it's not your somebody, it's somebody else's somebody. So, think about that. In Bloomington, we're excited this evening. We have our winners here, and they're going to lay some heavy stuff on you with their spoken word. All right? They're excited. Just breathe. We're going to start off with our spoken word winners. We have two. One, we have Aleah Upshaw. She's an eighth-grade student at Valley View Middle School, and she will start off with her spoken word. Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Aleah Upshaw from Valley View Middle School, and I'm in eighth grade. And I'm really happy to be here because I love poetry, and I'm really happy that I won. And so, I'm gonna read my poem to you guys. It's called "Indifferences." Sound clapping, glass shattering, they say equity is everywhere, but if it was, life would be fair. Unity and peace, just like injustice and treaties. Haven't you learned yet? Life is like a bet. You can win sometimes and sometimes you lose, but that's life. Sound clapping, glass shattering, broken hearts, dreams crushed, diversity overtaken by society. Outcasts laughed at, being different was wrong, until one place changed that, Bloomington. Overpowered by smiles and open hearts, sound clapping, glass shattering, hearts fixed and minds reopened. Smiles fixed, never broken, all in devotion filled with emotion. Sound clapping, glass shattering, finally free to be me.
I wish I had those words. Thank you. Our next winner is from Oak Grove Middle School, and she will introduce herself, and she will do her spoken word for you. She is a seventh grader, and as I said before, she attends Oak Grove Middle School.
Hello, I'm Weymon Yekason, and I entered this poem contest because truly, deep down, I feel like we can change the world with just the littlest things. And I love to write all the time, and I do it every day. And just entering this thing was just really fun for me to write, so I'm gonna read it to you now. It is called "The Color of My Skin." Somali, African-American, Caucasian, Mexican, Chinese, Dominican, Haitian, Indian, Cuban, Canadian, Sweden, African, and Jamaican. Those are all different types of ethnicities, but not even close to all. And with different ethnicities, bring in different people with different cultural backgrounds. We all seem different people, but people don't realize that we're also alike. We don't all think the same. We don't all look the same. We don't all talk the same. We don't all sound the same, and we don't all walk the same. But one thing that we all have in common is that we all bleed the same color. But instead of noticing that, we focus on someone's pigmentation or the way one race acts differently from the other. We focus on the one thing that should not be a big deal, and then we make the other race feel like they should conceal. Conceal the skin that they were given, the skin that they were always told that was beautiful, the skin their mothers hugged every night and kissed, the only skin they felt comfortable in all their life, the very skin they were told to be proud of, and we put them down? Yes, for example, I am black. So, does that label represent the only thing I am viewed as for the rest of my life? Does that label determine whether or not I'm kind? Does that tell you I want to be someone who changes the world? No, it does not. So then, why do I feel like I need to be hidden up, all curled up against the wall, hiding from the rest of the world? Why does the color of your skin determine the future that we have? Why are we put in different groups of skin color when we should be organized by our personalities? I get it, though, yes, we all do have different nationalities. But I don't want to grow up in a world where the color of your skin was viewed as a category and not a prize. If I'm going to live in Bloomington, I'm going to live among millions of people with different races. We need to come together and stop making people feel bad about who they are and what they want to be. We all need to agree that we can change the world, and we need to promise each other that we're gonna grow up in a world where the color of your skin will not identify who I am or who you are, that the color of my skin is not going to be looked at as something bad, but something that makes me even more beautiful. And one thing you need to know is that I will never, ever stop fighting for what is right. I will never let someone try to tell me that I am not worthy enough of living on this earth. If I'm going to live in the 21st century, I'm going to live it my way, and anyone who tries to put me down will just be putting me back up. We need to unify because we all contain beauty, and we don't need the rest of the world to see that. We need them to hear us and hear our voices. The color of my skin will never, ever define who I am, and neither should yours. Thank you.
And we had 27 t-shirt entries. And so, our winner is with us tonight, and it's Emily Acosta, and she's also from Valley View Middle School. She's an eighth grader, and she's here to show you and just to kind of greet you a little bit. So, please welcome her.
Hi, my name is Emily. I wanted to create a design that would try to conclude everyone, include everyone, but wasn't able to. What I wanted is like, anybody can think of it as their own way and not have a true meaning to it, but they can just see it as their own way, really.
Kind of an abstract kind of thing. Yes, we get it.
I'm just glad that everybody, well, not everybody, I'm just glad that people voted for it. I honestly didn't know if I was gonna win or not, but I'm glad that I'm here. And yeah.
Thank you. Deal? The big deal is they get $50 from Firefly Credit Union. The Human Rights Commission of Bloomington, Bloomington's, the city of Bloomington, went out, and they received $50 for each of these candidates that won. So, you said, "We're not candidates, we're winners." These are winners. So, thank you. We're proud of you. When they say Bloomington has great students, yes, we do. Can the parents please stand of these wonderful, wonderful students? Thank you so much. That's our design. Oops, it just moved. Did you see our design on the screen? It's beautiful. If you want a shirt, see me. All right? Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Okay. We'll move to the Community Advocate for Change Award from St. Mary's University that was awarded to Deana Wade-Ardley. And Dr. Eric Melby, our Assistant Superintendent, is here to speak about that.
I saw Deana Wade-Ardley trying to sneak away there. I had to block the door for a second.
He's always doing that.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board, I'm very happy to be here to reintroduce Deana Wade-Ardley to you. St. Mary's University gives out a Community Advocate for Change Award every year, and this year, Deana Wade-Ardley was the recipient of that award. They do it during their Missing Voices Equity and Action Summit. It's a collective impact summit that brings together educators, students, families, and community members to engage in solution-oriented dialogue and actionable steps toward educational equity, which is right up Deana's alley. Deana did get her master's and her principal license at St. Mary's. Deana's been in Bloomington schools for 28 years in the district. She, I know, she even did something before that, not in education, with Control Data. Her first job was a teacher at Oak Grove Intermediate School, and in 95, she became the district diversity coordinator and has been kind of iterating that role ever since. I'd like to point out that Deana is one of the most student-focused leaders I've ever encountered and enjoyed working with in my career. She's a fierce advocate for what's right for students and the community. She has amazing relationships with students, parents, and others in the community. She's just a very strong leader, and we're lucky to have Deana leading our Office of Educational Equity. And then, just a little bit extra about Deana currently, she's got five kids, she's got eight grandkids. She's a great cook. Take advantage if you can. She loves to cook, and she loves music, playing the piano and singing. She almost had a second career as a funeral singer, but she's still with us.
You know what's supposed to say there?
Oh, sorry. I know when you call Deana's cell phone, there's always music on when you usually hear a ringing, and I always appreciate the Stevie Wonder. So, I don't know if you get to pick that or not, but I would recommend keep going. I could go on, but Deana wants me to be brief. Please join me in recognizing, like St. Mary's did, Deana Wade-Ardley.
This is not an easy thing for me to do because I just think that this is just part of my job. It's my responsibility to the community. I do believe in our children. I believe in all of them. I believe in equity. I believe that they have a right to be here and to receive the best education and the best everything that we can give them. And so, that's what I advocate for, and that's what I stand for. And I'm like, "Who said that?" And if somebody tries to take me down, then I'm just gonna be up. All right? Thank you for the award. Thank you.
And the accolades for the Wade family continue in our Minnesota Teacher of the Year finalist, Cory Wade. And Kelvin Keisling.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, and Board. It's a pleasure to be here. Family and friends, welcome. Good to see all of you. Minnesota is in its 55th year of having a Teacher of the Year Award. It's been happening for 55 years, and we have over 86,000 educators who claim to be part of Education Minnesota, which puts up the award every year. Out of that 86,168 teachers were nominated this year, five of which were from Bloomington, two of which were from Hillcrest. Forty made it to the semifinals, Joshua Koval, Bloomington teacher, and Cory Wade. And Katie Jewell. Yep, thank you. Sorry, three of them. Then it went down to the finals, and there were nine. Cory Wade made it. Cory Wade is one of nine out of 168 who were nominated and one of nine out of 86,000 educators in this state being recognized as an exceptional educator. Cory exemplifies this. He's in his 14th year of teaching. I've known him my four years at Hillcrest. He strives every day to make sure that every kid finds significance, belonging, and fun in the classroom. But it's not just the kids. He makes sure that every parent feels significance, belonging, and fun, and that the community understands what that is. His classroom, I have the joy of looking at data in my school, his classroom doesn't have an achievement gap. And that's because of who he is and how he sees the kids. He believes every kid can make it and be beyond what his expectation is. He's a mentor teacher for our teachers in our district. If you ask anybody whose classroom they saw when they were a probationary elementary teacher, they probably got referred to Cory's class to see how he works. He's a responsive classroom educator for our state, for our nation, and internationally. And he's a colleague who cares greatly about the greater community of Bloomington in helping all students reach their highest potential. I am thrilled and delighted to recognize Cory tonight for his hard work as a teacher at Hillcrest and in Bloomington, and for his amazing work that got him to be one of an amazing set of nine teachers in our state. So, congratulations, Cory.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board, I was not planning to talk, so I just want to thank you. It's just, like my mom said, it's odd to do something and be rewarded for something that is just in my bones, my calling. So, Bloomington has many teachers that should have been nominated and should have went to the nine. And next year, start nominating your teachers because it's only 72 words you have to say. Let's get Bloomington on the board there. So, thank you so much. It was such a good experience. Thank you.
Next, we will recognize our Middle School Counselor of the Year, Sandra Mortenson. And Brian Engeman, the Oak Grove Middle School Principal, is here to talk about Sandra.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, School Board, viewing audience, what an amazing night just to hear all the great accolades people are doing. And I'm so proud and fortunate to be able to introduce Sandra Mortenson. She recently attended the Minnesota Counselor Association Meeting of the Year, where she was in running for the Middle School Counselor of the Year. She won that award, and at that event, she then received the State Counselor of the Year Award. And Sandra, it will be going on to DC now to compete in the National Counselor of the Year competition. And we are so fortunate to have Sandra as part of the Bloomington Schools, and I am so lucky to have Sandra part of Oak Grove Middle School for the work she does with our students and staff every day and the families. It's amazing to know that we have a counseling team like I have at Oak Grove Middle School but works together as a district group, just important people that make our school successful every day. And Sandra is just one of those great staff members, and I'm just so lucky to have a staff member like Sandra on board that has put in the time and effort to be recognized at state level for the work she's doing. This exemplifies who she is as a person, as a colleague, and just a dear friend to everybody. So, she's just a wonderful person, and what a great recipient for this award. So, I want to introduce Sandra Mortenson.
Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, and Board, Brian, thank you. I am so grateful to do the work that I love every day in Bloomington. I appreciate you, Brian, and Tim Chavari as well, for always supporting me to be creative and helping me to grow professionally. You've always given me license to kind of dig in and run, and not only that, you've given me opportunities at district-level meetings and committees that have enriched my career, and hopefully, I've been able to bring that back to support our staff and students, too. Our collaborative staff at Oak Grove is amazing, and the counseling group that we're working on and evolving with the support of the district is amazing as well. I'm just so proud and honored to be representing Bloomington and the state of Minnesota as I go on to Washington, DC. So, thank you, everybody.
Ewan, good luck to you. Next, we have the Special Education Community Advisory Council's 2019 Special Caring Awards. And Jennifer McIntyre, our Director of Special Ed, is going to tell us about that.
Thank you, Chairperson and Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the school board. Thank you for having me here tonight, and it is my pleasure. I get to introduce the co-chairs for our Special Education Community Advisory Council, or CCAC Council. It is a council built of all parents. There are a few staff members on there and myself, but we have a consistent group of parents who have been meeting over the course of the last several years. And more importantly, this year, we've met, and we had our annual banquet. And I'm going to have Kim Pawick and Scott Stevens, who are our co-chairs, come up and introduce a few of our winners from our banquet that we had just a few short weeks ago. So, Kim and Scott, if you'd like to come up here.
Good evening, Superintendent Fujitaki, Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and other esteemed school district and community members. Kim Pawick and I are very excited to be here on behalf as the co-chairs of the Bloomington Special Education Advisory Committee to bring to light individuals who work with our children and the children who have special needs in our school district every day because I don't believe they receive the recognition and the accolades that they really do deserve. My son, unfortunately, you probably are sick of me because I'm here, I think this is my 14th or 15th year I've probably been here in front of you. My son is now in the transition program, and he would not be where he is now without the members in the school district who have really helped him and brought him along. And so, I want to bring it up. We had, as Ms. McIntyre said earlier, we had our banquet several weeks ago, and we were very pleased and honored that Superintendent Fujitaki, Assistant Superintendent Melby, and a very large contingent of school board members were able to attend the banquet. For those who may not know, the banquet recognizes and honors individuals who work and volunteer in the Bloomington Schools and Transportation Department. This year, we had 43 individuals who were nominated, with five individuals being awarded the CCAC Special Caring Gold Certificate Award. And I'm going to turn it over to my co-chair so she can identify who they were and give a little background.
Good evening. I'm Kim Pawick. This is my first year as the co-chair with Scott. I've been on the committee, this will be my third year on the committee. I have I have a son that has special needs, and he is a sophomore at Jefferson in one of the Stride Programs. And I am also a special ed par in the district. I work at Washburn. And this will be going on my 12th year. So I have the privilege of giving you guys the star winners for the CCAT Committee. And I don't see any of them here. But if you are here and I don't see you, I apologize, but please come up if you are here. Our first one was Sandy Bartlett. She is a paraprofessional at Southwood Early Learning Center, and she was nominated by Lisa List and another one of her coworkers that I can't remember at the time, so sorry about that. Lisa Bartholomew, she's an EBD teacher at Jefferson High School. And Olivia Quinn, she is actually a volunteer at Hillcrest Community School in Jay McElroy's classroom. And she's actually going to get an education in special ed herself, and she comes on her own time and helps volunteer in those special ed classrooms, which is amazing because we know how some of those college kids are, and so good for her. And then we have Sandy Stevens. She's the attendance clerk at Olson Middle School. And then we have Aaron Walton. He is the Jets varsity coach at Jefferson High School, and he is also one of my son's coaches as well. And so I'm pretty pleased to, you know, give him that award because he really cares about these kids. And he's a general ed teacher, but he puts so much time and effort into the team and whatnot, and what goes into the travel and the scheduling and whatnot. So I appreciate that. On a little side note, I want to give a shout out to Mr. Wade because he was one of, one first-grade teacher, I was going to say second, but he was Owen's first-grade teacher, and he still today, he could not say Mr. Wade at the time. He would say my Wade. And even to this day, he still calls him my Wade whenever we see him out in the community. So thank you. Well deserved. And thank you.
Thank you. That brings me to the Gary Seamer's Exemplary Education Award 2019. And Wendy Marchak and...
Melissa Delversari.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are here to talk about that.
Good evening, Chair Bartalata, School Board members, Superintendent Fujitaki, the Cabinet, and the listening audience. Tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing Lacey Dawson for the Gary Seamer's Exemplary Educator Award. She is the BFT Treasurer since 2012, serving her fourth term in this position. She does the difficult position year in and year out, including over the summer. No matter what other obligations Lacey might have going on in her life, she is continually willing to take the extra step to make an event successful, join another committee to support her colleagues, stay up late to make sure the accounting books and membership records are up to date, attend a weekend event with her children, and the list goes on. And other things you might not know about Lacey is that she believes in continuing improvement. She has licenses in EBD, ASD, and ART. She's an autism specialist. She's trained many staff in CPI in restraining and de-escalation. And she's a special education teacher in the district for 14 years. So it is our pleasure, on behalf of the BFT, to recognize Lacey.
So when I got this award, I was surprised at Oak Grove at a staff meeting that I was five minutes late to, and was very, very in shock for half of the day. But it was very humbling and amazing to be given such an amazing award. Little did I know, when Wendy walked into my classroom and wondered if I knew anything about being a treasurer, did I know that I'd be walking into a whole new adventure in my life. It has taught me so much, being an officer. It has taught me so much, just how to be a better teacher, and just understanding how things work around here. So I just feel very, very blessed to have had that experience and to have gotten to know many of you and work with these wonderful people. So thank you.
This is Wendy Marchak, BFT President. I wanted to clarify something Lacey said. I didn't even go to the finance. I just said, I heard you're really good with math and numbers. And here we are. She's got the hardest job in the BFT, and we really appreciate her. Thank you.
That brings us to the Chamber of Commerce Future Leaders. And Andy Kublas, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching, and Debbie Belfry, Career Development Coordinator for the District, are here to tell us about that. And I see Kim Hanson, our Chamber President, is also here. Welcome.
Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, School Board members, listening public. It's a pleasure to be here to talk to you about the Future Leaders. I want to be a good host, make sure we recognize that people are here at the table with us. So beside me is Debbie Belfry. I'll let her introduce our guests.
Next to me is Kim Hanson, President of the Bloomington Chamber. We also have Eric Wrestler, our business teacher from Jefferson High School. Adam Filipich, the Future Leaders Committee Chair for the Bloomington Chamber. Cheryl Martin, who is representing Bloomington Schools and was a former business teacher but also one of the members of the Future Leaders Committee with the Chamber of Commerce. And Sophie Hidded. And Sophie will give some contributing comments in just a few minutes.
Thank you for that, and welcome, everyone. My job here tonight is just to frame exactly why we are recognizing our guests here. I've been in front of you before and talked about the framing of the PGP and how everything fits together. If I were to colloquially say what this project, I mean, what this presentation is, it would be called "You Are Here," just so that you have an idea about what's happening and what we're doing. So...
We took the batteries out.
Thank you. So as always, I'd like to start out with our pathways to career in college graphic. So this is the work that we do every day. We think it's very important in Bloomington Public Schools that we are setting kids up to have a strong pathway to a career in college. I'm always honored when I get to talk in front of people. I was in front of the Realtors a couple of weeks back, and I think where many school districts stop at graduation, we care enough to make sure that our students are contributing members of the society. And so I'm really, really proud of being in Bloomington and that being part of what we do. And we know that we can't do that without partners like we have here tonight. So again, I've been in front of you before, and if you recall, we used the navigation metaphor to get through our PGP conversation. And so I had shared with you that night that my favorite navigation tool is that application there called Waze. And the reason that I liked it is because it was interactive, and it gave you a heads-up, if you will, if things were happening on your destination. And so, much like the PGP, if something is happening in a student's life, the PGP signals that you might need to turn right here, or you might need to turn left here. And if we were to have the ability to take the cover off of that Waze app and look inside of it, if you will, I can picture my grandfather taking the hood up and looking at his Mustang at the engine. If we're able to do that with the Waze app, we would see lots of things coming together to make this functional. We'd see lots of algorithms. We'd see lots of people adding data to it and an algorithm to pull it all together to make sure that we're understanding what's happening and how we need to navigate. And it's very much the same as the PGP. If we take the cover off the PGP and look inside of it, there are many, many moving parts to help students be successful and tell them to turn left or turn right. So as we get to a student and ask them, what's your career in college plan? We know that we want them to have something very solid that they can rely on. And so as we move on to the next piece, "You Are Here," as I said earlier. I want to show you exactly why the Chamber's here, how they fit into our plan, and why they're such great partners. Again, if you look at the PGP at the very top of our graphic here, that becomes, that's the app, if you will, back to the Waze metaphor. But under the hood are so many things that support it, the work that Cheryl Martin and her team has done to make this come to life. And so the first thing that you'll see underneath the PGP sign there are the career in college pathways. And we have four of them that we identify. And again, that was Cheryl and her team, her work, who put that together. And so even as far as aligning our classes in high school to make sure that they are working in these four pathways, so that students have an idea about the classes that they're taking and maybe where they might want to end up. The significant part of those pathways, my colleague John Weiser likes to say, and I love the term, is that those pathways need to have on-ramps and off-ramps. And so that if a student finds themselves in arts and communication, and then all of a sudden, they see something they like in health services and human services, they have an off-ramp and an on-ramp to get back on. The key to that for us is that we have to teach kids how to navigate that pathway. We need mentors and adults to help them, but we can't hold their hand the whole way. And so teaching the students to be able to navigate through this is very, very important. It's like when we taught our kids to walk across the street. We don't hold their hand now that they're 21 years old. We taught them how to cross the street. And so we're teaching students how to navigate through these pathways. And underneath, you see, underneath, further underneath the hood of the PGP are the three stars. We've got our academic programs, and we've had those people come talk to you in the past, our resources, and then our support. And what I've highlighted is what I feel that, you know, the Chamber is here tonight to talk about, which is the mentor section of this. We have incredible mentors and incredible partnership with the Chamber, and they're going to talk tonight about what they do for our community. I think we could probably all list five or six mentors that have helped us along the way. And we know that we couldn't do things without people helping us. And so this part of the PGP is very, very important, and this is a part that keeps things going. So once again, our partners help bring this vision to life. We have great expertise in the school system to navigate kids and get them into educational programming. We have great expertise as we look at the technical piece of education, but we also have great expertise in our community. And we have here, like I said, the Chamber to talk to us a little bit about how they help us out, how they help our students out, networking and making connections so that they can be successful. So in closing, as the student gets to this signpost and has to figure out if they're going to go north or south, a lot of things play into that, past experience, classes that they've taken. But I would submit that the people that they connect with, and in our case, the mentors that they connect with, and the people in our community, help shape that direction. And so I think it's a great honor for them to be here tonight, and I'm going to turn it over to Debbie to do the rest.
It's wonderful to be here, Madam Chair, Board members, Superintendent Fujitaki. I couldn't be more pleased to introduce the group of people again this year that make up the Bloomington Future Leaders Committee. And Kim Hanson will be phenomenal at explaining what the whole program is. We have been doing this over 12 years now, in some fashion or another, and it's just been a great group of people to work with to bring this together and to have Cheryl Martin be our Personal Growth Plan Coordinator and bring that piece of it together with the workforce here in Bloomington and our community members. So I will turn it to Kim.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Debbie. Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, and Board, and distinguished guests in the audience, it's a thrill to be here. What an inspiring evening. If you think about it this way, the Chamber is here to uplift the business community. We are here to support and advocate on behalf of businesses all across Bloomington. And in order to do that, to be good stewards of our business people's time and energy and finances, we need to be that bridge that is helping them out with workforce development and hiring issues that are happening right now. And we can do that because of this Bloomington Future Leaders Team and the great work that the schools are doing with the PGP plan, as well as the mentoring, connecting our students with business leaders as they're entering this incredibly important time in their life, right? They're going off, they're doing post-secondary education of some sort, and they need some guidance. They need those great voices of business who can help them enter the world of work. And so we are thrilled to talk about some scholarships here tonight. And I'd like to thank everybody for supporting us. Debbie said we've been doing this for 12 years. I've got some wonderful statistics to share with you as well. So our mission is simply to provide opportunities to Chamber members and students at the high schools, to build meaningful relationships that can last for years with each other and gain insights. I believe that our mentors gain an awful lot of insight through their relationship with the students as well. I'd like to introduce our steering committee. We have myself, Jennifer Anderson, we've got Andrew Avila, Debbie Belfry here with the Bloomington Schools, Bruce Decknagel, I know is here tonight with Choice Autor rental, teacher Dan Gassner from Kennedy, Chris Guanera from RBCU, Rachel Hare, Kennedy Business Teacher, Megan Johnson with Thrivant, Cheryl Martin, who you'll hear from Bloomington Public Schools, Adam Filipich, our fearless leader of the BFL Committee with AXA Advisors, teacher Eric Wrestler with the Jefferson Business Teacher. And I'd like to make a special thank you to Anna Stinson on our Chamber staff, who really is the glue that holds all of this work together. So thank you so much, Anna. And we can't do this without the generous sponsorship of our local business community. They invest in us to do the work to help them be strong. And so I want to definitely thank the Mall of America as our presenting sponsor here tonight, CenterPoint Energy, RBCU, Excel Energy, the Hilton Minneapolis Bloomington, where we host our wonderful conferences, and then, of course, the Bloomington Public Schools for everything that you bring to the table to enable the Bloomington Future Leaders to exist. So here are some fast facts. It's fun. I am a numbers person. I know we were talking earlier about that young woman who won the finance award. I'm with people all the time, and I truly enjoy that aspect of my job. But when I get a chance to dig into some numbers and use the other side of my brain, I enjoy that just as much. So this year, we're so excited to tell you that we have scholarships in these student names equating to $7,500 this year. And that money was raised specifically for the scholarship program through our two largest community events, the Bloomington Chamber Gala and the Bloomington Chamber Golf Classic. And so this year alone, 25 businesses and organizations have been involved in the conferences and the mock interview process. And so far, between the cash given away and the in-kind sponsorships, we're looking at $15,000. Now let's go back a little bit, and we've got some numbers to share from 2014. All total, we've given away $36,250 to students that we hope go off, get a great education, whether that be a certificate, some training, or a four-year degree. And we want them to come back, and I'd like them to be my boss someday. So we've got, all total, since 2014, 39 scholarship winners. And please recognize that this involves over 130 businesses and organizations that have been at the table during those conferences, that have been mentors, that have been doing mock interviews and working closely with students. Anna, 300 hours of staff time, a little bit of mine, a lot of Anna's. She works very hard on this. She's so passionate about it, and we're grateful. 150 hours of this wonderful volunteer steering committee since 2014. And if you add in the in-kind pieces I was sharing earlier, all total, we're looking at over $100,000, $108,000 that we have been able to impact back into the academic community. So now I would like to introduce Cheryl Martin. I would like to introduce Eric Wrestler. I've gotten to know Eric. He's been not only a fantastic teacher here at Jefferson, but he also is part of the DECA Program, and I have had the pleasure of volunteering and being a judge through that process. So there you go. Thank you, Eric.
Well, thank you. I had a ninth-grade baseball game tonight, so we weren't sure if I was going to be able to make it or not. But we were able to finish in time. But I get the opportunity to tell you kind of what we did this year, at least in the fall and winter programming. We started off the year where we had... We started off the year where we had some members from the Chamber come into each of the schools and talk to our students about what the Chamber is, what this Future Leaders Program is, and just kind of give them an overview, a basis of what this year is going to look like. Our first real big event is the Fall Conference, and we always have a keynote speaker, Stevie Ray comes in, very dynamic, very upbeat, energetic, gets the kids moving around. They're able to sit at tables or stand at tables most of the time because they're doing stuff with a couple different volunteers from the Chamber at that time, making those connections, playing games, trying to figure out how to get your mind to work more quickly and think on your feet and introduce yourselves and all those sorts of things. We're also able to have some family college planning sessions, both at Jefferson and at Kennedy. Megan Johnson's from Thrivnet Financial came in and gave them kind of a pathway of how to pay for college or how to think about starting to pay for college and doing that planning for that. And then in the winter, we had a couple more activities. We had Chamber members coming in again and talk about scholarship applications. So it was, part of it was to encourage the students to apply for this scholarship and what they need to do that, but then they broadened it out just in general. How do you write a scholarship essay? How do you apply for scholarships? How do you find different scholarships? And tried to help them more navigate that path than just this scholarship as well. And then we had a winter conference where we had three different speakers come in, and they were much shorter speakers at the time, but just talking about different obstacles that they had in their lives and how they overcame it and the importance to teach the kids resilience and how things aren't going to go perfect all the time, and there are going to be times where things are tough, and how do you deal with that? How do you overcome that? How do you keep trudging along until things get good and become successful? And now I get to pass it over to Adam, I believe, who's going to talk about our spring information.
I am indeed, yes. We got that part right. Good evening, everyone. My name's Adam Philippich, and it's been a pleasure to be a part of this committee the last several years, and I'm excited to be here once again. The spring, we don't have a major conference that we do like we have in the fall and the winter, but the main event that we have in the spring is our scholarship process, and that's a fairly intense process. We have a scholarship or an application deadline in the middle of March, and that process involves an application students have to fill out, they have to submit resumes, transcripts, they have some essays that they have to write for us as well. The second part gets even a little more intense, as I'm sure our winners will attest. We actually have the finalists, once the applicants have been evaluated, we have them come in and they do a panel interview. And that includes myself, that includes the President of the Chamber of Commerce. So it's a fairly big deal, but it's a great opportunity for us to get to know the students a little bit better and have a chance to learn more about them and what they've been through and what they're hoping to achieve, and we'll have a chance to hear from some of them in a moment here. The other event that we do in the spring is we have a mock interview series that we do where students are given a chance to meet with Chamber members and go through an interview for a position that they've kind of created that they think they may want to apply for someday. The great thing about that is not only do they get to go through an interview and get that experience, but they also get to get some feedback from those Chamber members on what they did well, maybe some areas to work on, so that when they are sitting in the hot seat for the real thing, so to speak, they've had that experience and gotten that feedback. What I'm going to do now is hand it over to Cheryl Martin. She's going to speak a little bit about our Spotlight Speaker Series.
Thanks, Adam. The Spotlight Speaker Series is a program that we piloted last spring at the two high schools, and so in collaboration with Best Prep and these wonderful folks at the Chamber of Commerce, we decided that it would be easier for students if we could bring speakers and they could have opportunities to learn about various careers right on site at the high schools. So this year, we expanded our programming, and we had over 15, well, we actually had 12 speaker events with, I don't know exactly the number of speakers that actually came, oh, 22 industry professionals that spoke. It was really a positive response from the students this year. We had over 500 students attend the various speaker events. So 500 students had a chance to hear from industry professionals right in their career in college center or media center. Part of the process this year that we talked about as a committee was what can we do to help students take that next step beyond just hearing, having the experience of hearing about a specific career at a spotlight speaker? And so one of the things we did was we brought along our educational partners early in the year. We brought along the Brand Lab to our marketing speaker and talked to kids about potential internship opportunities through the Brand Lab that they could take advantage of. We also brought in an organization, actually the Minnesota CPA, that is offering internship, mentorship opportunities for students interested in accounting when we had our CPA Accounting Speaker come. Our Chamber members came so willingly and also came with open arms. So often at the activities or at the speaker events, the speakers would hand out their cards and invite students to come for informational interviews or meet for coffee or ask them to come and get a workplace tour. So really, the Spotlight Speaker Event is kind of a springboard to additional future learning. As the year progressed, our Career in College Center, PGP implementers, began to receive invitations from various Chamber members to host field trips in their workplaces as well. So it's really exciting to think about the potential of this program and how it can launch additional opportunities for us. You can see a list of speakers that came in the various careers, but I just think it's important to note that really this program is about our students. So we brought along Sophie Hadad tonight to talk with you about her experience with our Spotlight Speaker Events.
So thank you all for having me. It's an honor to be here, and it's an honor to think that, like, they thought of me to, you know, come in and talk about this. But I've received such an amazing experience and so many amazing opportunities through the career spotlights and through PGP that's, like, really helped me set up for what I wanted to do. So the career spotlight speakers that I go to are the ones from Mall of America, and I went to see Mr. Avila from the Galleria talking about hospitality and tourism because those are all things that I was interested in doing. And so Ms. Walrick, Becky Walrick, is the career coordinator at Jefferson High School, and she sends out emails to everybody and asks them if they're interested in specific things based on what they've put down in their PGP and based on certain goals and occupations that they want to do. And she lets us know when there's going to be specific things based on what we want. So for me, I got the marketing and hospitality and tourism, and I just came in for a couple minutes, like 45 minutes, to get an amazing, amazing performance, amazing, just like experience talking with all these people and getting that real-world experience. And meeting Mrs. Yang from the Brand Lab was also able to help me get an internship this summer. And I did know about the Brand Lab previously, but she really helped me springboard to applying and getting into special lists to give me a better chance. So this summer, I will have, like, a paid internship working in marketing, and it's such an amazing opportunity. I'm still a junior in high school, so having that under my belt and putting that on my college applications is really going to give me, like, a boost, hopefully. But being able to experience all this stuff has helped me figure out what I want to do when I grow up, and now I have a really set idea of what schools that I want to go to and what I really want to get into. And obviously, that could change, but having a plan makes me feel more set and makes me feel more accomplished as a person. And I've gotten to do so many opportunities through PGP and through all the career spotlights, like attending the Girls in IT Field Trip at the Mall of America, where I was able to see so many people that went, that came in and presented at the career spotlight, and I was able to reconnect with them and, you know, get to know them on a first-name basis and everyone here on the Board. I've gotten to know them very well through the Bloomington Future Leaders Conferences that I've attended, and it's all been such an amazing experience for me and such an amazing opportunity because I do want to take control of my future, and having that now is so amazing for me and for all the students that have gotten to experience this. I'm one of very many people that have gotten to, you know, get internships and go to these cool things and get that experience, and then knowing all these people by name is going to help me in the future and allow me to network with them and being affiliated with all these people, it's been really cool. So yeah.
So Sophie said it all. I don't know if there's more to say about this great programming, but we do have a few quotes up here from other students that have been involved in the programming throughout the year, students who have attended the conferences and their takeaways. For me, I miss greatly being in the classroom with the students, and my favorite part of the Future Leader Events was riding the bus in the morning with the students and how quiet they were, and then watching them interact and gain confidence in these events, and then the buzz on the bus on the way back to the school and how confident they felt and how much they had learned from these gracious individuals and the mentoring that they had provided them was truly amazing. So I'm speaking on behalf of my teaching peers, as well as the Career in College and PGP implementers, that these individuals, as well as, I think we mentioned, Brand Lab, who is also a friend of Bloomington, and Best Prep, all bringing, coordinating and collaborating together to bring great opportunities for our students.
And as a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm going to speak to the impact for Chamber members as well. I think it's, hopefully, it's evident what a great program this is and the great opportunities the students have, but it's also a great opportunity for Chamber members. Not only do Chamber members benefit by having the opportunity to be involved in the Future Leaders Program, having a chance to network with other volunteers. If you've been to one of our events in the past, one of our conferences, there's usually 20 to 25 other volunteers there from all different aspects of the business community, so it's a great opportunity to get to know each other. It's obviously a great opportunity to give back to the community a little bit as well and to be involved in the school program. And just being, having a chance to do things like this tonight or do the different mock interviews, the different events throughout the year is a great opportunity to give back and volunteer some time. And hopefully, as has been referenced a few times here, our ultimate goal is to introduce students to potential employers and vice versa, and hope that those networking opportunities and those relationships that start out at a high school level may someday come to fruition, whether that's in the form of an internship, some sort of mentorship, whether it's official or maybe just site visits or job shadows, or hopefully eventually at some point, employment as well. So certainly, there's great potential benefits for the Chamber members. I won't read through the quotes, but I will tell you that the feedback we've gotten over the years from the various Chamber members has been really great. One of my, one of the most common things that I hear, and I think I've mentioned this before, is the two most common pieces of feedback that I hear from Chamber members volunteering at these programs are, "Oh, my goodness, these kids are sharp," and, "Gosh, I wish we would have had something like this when I was in high school." And some form of that I hear every year, so it's really fun to be able to see that and hear that feedback and know those people are feeling like their time is well spent. With that, one of my personal favorite parts of being involved in this program is getting to know our scholarship applicants, and certainly, one of the most fun parts is getting to call them and tell them when they've won. So we do have five of our seven winners here today, and I'm going to hand it back over to Mr. Wrestler to introduce them and let them introduce themselves.
Thank you, Adam. As Adam said, we have five of the seven winners here tonight. Maggie and Bethany were unable to come tonight because of previous commitments, but Noah, Paul, Anna, Samantha, and Emily are here, and so I'm going to let them speak to you for just a minute, just to kind of remind them what they were going to say as well. They're just going to tell you their name, what school they're from, what their plans are for the fall, and then something about the program that really stood out to them and impacted them as well. So I'll turn it over to them.
Hello, my name is Noah Hansen, and I'm a senior at Kennedy High School. My plans for this fall is to attend the University of Minnesota Duluth to major in financial accounting. And one thing that I really enjoyed about these programs is the different activities that they had, for example, on making good impressions and networking.
Good evening. My name is Emily Sanchez Martinez. I go to Kennedy High School. This year, I plan to go to Bethany Lutheran College. I plan to be a nurse and hopefully one day volunteer my time in service in third-world countries. What I really love about this program is that you guys see us as people of high school, not like people that you guys don't get. You respect us and you show us the right way, so thank you so much for all these opportunities.
Hello, my name is Anna Law. I'm a senior at Jefferson High School, and in the fall, I plan on attending the University of Minnesota Twin Cities to study elementary education as well as Spanish. And I would just like to say thank you for, to the program and everybody here for, and really learning all about networking and to present myself and take advantage of the opportunities that I've been given. So thank you.
Hello, I'm Samantha Ohm. I'm a senior at Kennedy High School, and next year, I'm going to the University of River Falls, Wisconsin. And I'm taken away from the conferences, a lot about communications, just with interactions with adults and the other teens, just like they said, it was really cool to get to know everybody there, and I'm thankful for receiving the scholarship.
Hi, I'm Paul Kelly from Jefferson High School. I'm currently a senior. I will be attending Gustavus Adolphus College in the fall, majoring in business management, probably obtaining a minor in computer science. One thing that I really liked about the conferences was all the business advisement people that came and mentored us during these events. I'm really thankful for their time and think that it was a very worthwhile opportunity for myself and all the others that were involved in this program. I also learned a lot about networking and presenting and like how would you talk to people, which was an amazing opportunity.
Aren't they something?
And if anybody has questions, I also want to thank people on the school board who have attended some of our conferences over the years. There's always room for all of you to be one of those mentors in a different way than what you do here, so we'd welcome you to become a part of this program in some way. If anybody has questions, we'll be happy to answer anything.
Just a quick one for Sophie. Not going to let you get away without a question. So you gave a really good presentation. Thank you. So the 12 or 13 people that are watching right now, if they're high school students and you wanted to recruit them for Future Leaders, now that you've done it for a year, what would you say to them?
That's a good question. I think that to anybody that is, you know, around my age or a little bit younger than me, taking advantage of opportunities and setting yourself up is the most important thing that you can do, especially at this age and like getting all these amazing opportunities. It's really just about taking advantage of it, and, you know, my going into freshman year of high school did not think that I was going to be doing all this amazing stuff. I had no idea what I wanted to do with my life, but now that, like, through, especially Mr. Wrestler, who's always, like, who's my DECA advisor and really helped me through, like, the business club that I've gotten to, you know, attend international competitions in amazing places and, you know, taking advantage of so many, so many different things and getting to know everybody here and having that under my belt, just as like a junior in high school, I still have one more year of high school. I think that's the most important thing is just being, having all of this stuff accessible to further my education and further opportunities for me in the future.
Do you apply next year for a scholarship?
I definitely will be.
No more questions? Well, thank you all, all of you, for attending, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, I need to ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the school board on something that's not on the agenda this evening? Please come forward. Seeing no one, I would like to ask if there's any students here that are here because they attend government class? Yes, okay. If you don't mind coming forward to state your name at the podium and your teacher. A requirement over 12th grade government class is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort, things that you may attend our city council meetings, school board meetings, or courtroom proceedings. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion in the political process. So please go ahead. Oh, we got a lot. Go ahead.
Thank you, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the Board. I am Ella Jones. I'm a senior at Jefferson, and I have Storleen as my government teacher.
Thank you.
I'm McKenna Rupp. I'm a student at Jefferson, and my teacher is Mr. Storleen.
Hi, I'm Sophia Lemay, and Ms. Starlene is also my government teacher.
My name's Quentin Morris. I'm a senior at Jefferson. My teacher is also Mr. Sealing.
Tenzin Ringdall, and Starlene is also my teacher.
My name is Colin Joyce, and Mr. Starlene is also my teacher.
I'm Daisy Adet, and Mr. Starlene is also my teacher.
I'm Chloe LaFawn. I go to Jefferson, and Mr. Starlene is also my teacher.
I'm Sydney Smolyn at Jefferson with Starlene as well.
I'm Jada Abram. I'm a senior at Jefferson, and Mr. Starlene is my teacher.
I'm Tenzin Ringdall, and Mr. Starlene is also my teacher.
I'm Cal Margado, and Mr. Starlene is also my teacher.
My name is Irving G. Also, Mr. Starlene is my teacher.
Hi, my name is Riley Einz. Mr. Starlene is also my teacher.
I always thank Mr. Starlene for sending us an audience.
Was this the last, was this the last chance before graduation?
I believe so. Thank you. And I guess your time is up. You're really only required to stay for one hour, but you, you're more than welcome to stay, of course. Anyone along this while will sign your agenda for you, okay? That brings us to Part A of our agenda. Would someone like to move Part A?
To move.
Part A is our regular board business minutes, personnel action, and contracts and agreements. All in favor of Part A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Thank you. Brings us to Part B. And number one on Part B is the wrestling cooperative sponsorship. Please, oh, sorry.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves ending the wrestling cooperative sponsorship for Jefferson and Kennedy High School effective for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Thank you. Our Assistant Superintendent and the Athletic Directors are here to tell us about this. Thank you.
Chair Bartolotta, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. Yep, I'd like to reintroduce you and the viewing public. Chad Nyberg, AD at Jefferson, and John Anderson, the AD at Kennedy, excuse me, are with me here this evening. In 2017, the State High School League made two changes to the cooperative postseason rules, and they took effect this, this school year. The rules changes stated that in a regular season, co-op teams must compete as a co-op team in sections and finals. This was different than prior years when a co-op, co-op team cannot separate to compete. I might be butchering this a little bit, and that's why I have these guys here with me to help answer questions for you. And also, the, the section placement is based, the rule change, on 100% enrollment of the larger school in the co-op and 50% of the enrollment of the smaller school, which changed which sections we were in and who we were competing with for wrestling. Our students on other co-op teams aren't impacted the way that wrestling is with these rules. Participation by Jefferson High School students in the wrestling co-op has declined over the past few years, and next year we're not expecting any Jefferson wrestlers. Therefore, the schools principals, Kennedy and Jefferson, and the athletic activities directors who are here tonight agree and recommend that the wrestling co-op should end, and we recommend approval of the resolution. Now we can answer any questions you might have. And by we, I mean Chad and John can help answer questions you may have.
Anybody have a question? Director Saram?
Yeah, what move is it when they have the one arm behind them? The interesting point was, so when we had the, together, the co-op, we were in a higher population conference.
This year. Yeah, this year. This year, yes.
This year. So that put us in an unfavorable.
In essence, right? Because it was really a Kennedy program, and it bumped them up a class for where they would normally be competing if they're just by themselves, quote unquote. Where like in years past, when you section out at playoff time, we go our separate ways and it doesn't impact us. But it impacted Kennedy in a adverse way this year.
Yes, it pushed us up to a 3A level as opposed to with the new section placement, we'd be in a 2A level.
Good, thank you.
Anyone else?
So in that higher level, how did, how did you guys do? Just curiosity.
No, it, it's fine. We lost in the opening round or the second, technically the second round, the quarterfinals of the team section. And we sent one participant to the state meet this year, which is, we, we kept the, the streak alive that we've had for, you know, over a decade of sending wrestlers to the state meet, but I believe it was, I think Coach Fass said it was our lowest in a large number of years.
And I know we were talking earlier, and there's no, currently there's no wrestlers from Jefferson for, for next year. What if that changed? What if someone in Jefferson says they do want to wrestle? Are they going to have to transfer to Kennedy? Or how, how do we accommodate?
So, you know, the idea of co-opping is unique in a multi-high school district, right? Because it may be viewed differently, or we've been, we work pretty hand in hand with one another. So the question that we kind of pose ourselves is one or two students, you know, at what, what are we, what's the, the risk reward or where do we land on this of, of changing the whole team concept? And, you know, they still haven't, kids could have an opportunity to wrestle. You're right, they would have to transfer. Now, this could be, let's say that we are two high schools in two cities, right? And Jefferson didn't have any wrestlers. No one would take us anyway because we would cause every other school, right, if they were smaller than us, to become larger and then still be placed at a higher level. So what gain would that school have? Like Richfield, for instance, right? They would never take us unless they, for some reason, just were needed numbers, right? So it could change over time if, for instance, if Kennedy's numbers dropped and we needed each other to do it, but we just don't bring much to the, to support it. That's the, the challenging part. And the, the other way with it is everyone that comes, all of our other co-ops that go from east to west don't impact us because we're already at the largest class, right? So that doesn't, this is one of the unique ones going the other way that kind of has a negative impact.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of this resolution? Jim, did you have one?
Well, I was just going to say, can you change back again should something happen?
If, you know, if we get some influx, we'll have to figure out what that influx is and kind of risk reward to try to figure it all out.
Deal with it on a year to year basis.
It is, yeah. It could be year to year, but I, I don't, I don't foresee one, two, or three, or four, or five, six kids making this move, you know? I think it would have to be a pretty, pretty instrumental number to make it happen. And we've looked at the, the youth numbers, and it's just they're, it's not there.
Right.
To, to support that. But yes, and just because we asked to co-op doesn't mean that we get to either. We have to go to conference members and section members to get approval. Like I think most people would say, just because we asked to, to co-op that we get to? It's not the case. We have one section opponent or one conference opponent, or that we don't have enough support within our own means that the, the league would say, you're not going to co-op. We're not going to allow it because your conference members and your section members don't support it. And then all it would really take is us for, to be successful one time, and then they would shut it down. That's the truth.
That's true.
Yep, so.
Okay. Done? All right? Okay. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have an adjustment to the 20... Is it 1819 or 1920? 1819, okay. School calendar. Would someone like to move that?
Madam Chair?
Please.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached resolution authorizing the school district to count snow days as instructional days for the purpose of calculating hours and days in the school year and the calculation of the average daily membership of the 2018-2019 school year pursuant to laws enacted by the 2019 legislature.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Moby?
Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. I know it was a beautiful sunny today, day today, so you may not recall, we had kind of a crummy winter here in Minnesota, in the Twin Cities. And because of that, we had to call off school a number of days, as did many or all other schools in the state. Therefore, the legislature and the governor signed and passed Statute 128.41, which would allow us, if the board approves it, to count those days as school days this year, which helps with the statutory requirements for number of days school needs to be in session. So for the, for the five days, January 29th, 30th, 31st, February 20th, and April 11th, I would recommend that the board votes yes to this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions? Director Saram?
Would other districts' schools that were closed for six, seven, or eight days, would that apply to them too, that they get credit for all of those days that they were closed?
Yep, snow days or weather impacted days this year would be allowed to be counted as student contact days.
We don't, we don't give a bonus because we were only closed a few days, right?
Correct.
Anyone else?
I guess I'll talk to the legislature.
Dr. Bennett?
Well, Dr. Moby, as you know through our conversations, that I'm not in favor of this, what the state did here, I'm not in favor of the idea of counting snow days as instructional days. I think that the taxpayers are paying for kids to be educated, and when we shortchange them on that, I think it's not a, a good return on their investment. So my, my preference, as we've talked about before, is that we should make these days up. I think that our kids go to school for a far too little amount of time as it is. 168 days is way too little. And when we chop off five and it gets down to 163, that's just, I'm not in favor of that idea. But my question for you is, do you know of any school districts that, that haven't passed this resolution and are making up that time? And if, if so, are they making up by days or are they just tacking minutes onto their days?
I'm not sure which districts are taking advantage of the statutory change this year or the, the law change this year. Some, some districts have made up some days. I don't know if that, you know, I don't know how many have made up how many days. Some, some have made up some days, and I'm sure a number are taking advantage of this one, one-year only opportunity.
Okay. And just another comment on our, our severe weather team. I think they did fabulous job this year when we had five days when, when really we could have had eight or nine days. And I think on every single day, they made the right call, whether to have school or not have school. So fabulous job on that end. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So now do we need a roll call? Okay, we'll start with Dr. Beebe.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Appreciate that. Resolution to, oh, correcting the proposal to place a tenured teacher on unrequested leave of absence. Would someone like to move that resolution? Please.
Act as a resolution placing tenured teachers on partial unrequested leave of absence. I move the approval of se- separate resolutions placing tenured teachers on partial unrequested leave of absence and vote as one. Mark Eggers, Michelle Holland, Megan Lagerin, Perry Rudy.
All right, that's the next resolution.
Oh, it is.
So should we move forward? Can we move forward with this resolution? All right, we'll move forward with this resolution.
Okay.
I believe we need a roll call vote on this. Or no, first we need a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And...
Oh, my question is, so this is, it says approves the attached resolution. It was like the correct or something? Was there, did we do a mistake or something, or what's the?
Let's let Director...
Yeah, that's why before I vote.
Go ahead, dear.
I think we just switched to the second one, correct?
Yes, we switched to the second one.
No, I'm just keeping track.
Oh, okay. Now I'm all backwards.
For this one, no, there's no corrections. This one is a, the second reading as required by state of putting, so the next two that aren't corrections are required by state, that we read them twice because they are tenured individuals.
Okay. Everybody on the same page here? Okay. So is there any other discussion about this resolution? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Thank you for that. Now we'll go back to the one just before that, so it'll be number 13.
Madam Chair, I'll go need that.
Yes, please.
Okay, be resolved the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the attached resolution correcting the proposal to place tenured teacher Mary Ann Boniface on a partial unrequested leave of absence.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, so the previous resolution that came before the board, we weren't aware of one section that they, she was retaining. So we just added that back in. So she is still on a layoff situation, but not as much as it had shown last week, or not last week, the last board session.
Any questions regarding this resolution? All right, we'll start with Director Beebe.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. And we have one more. Number 15, resolution for placement, resolution to place tenured teacher on unrequested leave of absence.
Madam Chair?
Please.
Attached as a resolution placing tenured teachers on unrequested leave of absence. I move the approval of separate resolutions placing tenured teachers on unrequested leave of absence and vote as one. Ashley Growth and Stacy Philippich.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Again, this is the second reading.
Okay. Start with Director Bennett.
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you. And that brings us to board member reports. Who would like to go first? Okay.
All right, I had the opportunity to attend Box City Vigil. This is over at Oak Grove Presbyterian Church. Bloomington United for Youth puts, puts on what they call a Box City Vigil. This is intended to draw attention to homeless youth throughout the state. It, I think it started at seven at night and it goes until seven in the morning. It might have been six at night to seven in the morning. There is a platform, they had some, some speakers. Dean Phillips was there. Dwayne Lowman from City Council. And I believe I'm, Steve Elkins was there, also representatives. Unfortunately, after Congressman Phillips left, it started to rain and it kept raining, and it kept raining, and it kept raining. And it wasn't supposed to rain that long. So I think the speaker program kind of got washed out, but the kids had an opportunity to put their, put their boxes together, get their, get their spots mapped out for the evening. And it's been a, it's been a really interesting venue, and I think the students that come there, at least the ones that I spoke to, seemed to have a new and better appreciation for the, the plight of the homeless youth in, in the state of Minnesota. So that was really, really interesting, and I give credit to the folks that, that hung out there. Also had an opportunity to attend a Bloomington Chamber event. The Chair, Kim Hansen, was here. I'm sorry, the President, Kim Hansen, was just here presenting. This was a, what they call a Coffee with Kim, an opportunity to share throughout the community. It happened to be hosted over at Normandale Community College, and Dr. Esther was the keynote speaker. And Dr. Esther talked about, among other things, about the importance of, of the AA degrees that, that you can get at, at a, at a junior college. She talked about the importance of, she said that, and I know I'm not doing this justice to, to remember it adequately, but she said that some colleges take perhaps the top 10 or the top 5%. And she's proud of saying that we take the top, we take the top 100%. They'll take anyone that comes. And they, they do the very best they can to make sure that those students continue on in their educational lives. And she did a wonderful job of, of expressing and explaining how Normandale Community College has done that over the last 50 years. This just happens to be their 50-year anniversary. So if anyone's listening, all of our 14 or 15 folks that are listening at home, you can stop into Normandale Community College and ask for a tour, and I'm sure anyone there would be glad to give you a tour. I'll wrap up my report by saying that 9/17 had a study session and board meeting. We tagged them on together. For that particular board, it was a long meeting, I think it was just under four hours. We went over, among other things, we went over some policy work, there were five or six policies that were, a couple of them were first reading, two or three of them were second reading. And then, we did some long-term facilities planning. That board is on a June, June to... It's a different schedule, but I might say a June-to-June schedule, not, not a September-to-June schedule. So, we were rotated just a little bit differently, and there was some great conversation, as always, and, and I want to thank the other eight of my coworkers on that particular board. So, I will end with three, three bits and pieces.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I attended the Westwood Elementary, had a health fair, and I think it's Normandale Community College also, that had their nursing students there. And they had three, four different rooms set up with educational activities and things for the kids to learn. And so, I went around and visited different rooms while students were in there, and our students were just so engaged and so interested in, in what was going on in the room. And then, one of those, one of the other places they could visit was also the gym, and they had a Zumba instructor. So, there, I actually saw the kindergartners in there, boy, was that funny. They were having a grand old time in the Zumba class in there also. I also had a chance to attend Kennedy Unity Day, where they could visit the booths during lunchtime. And once again, our students, you know, just did great work putting together some wonderful booths, and just really impressive, all of our students. And, and, you know, students were interested in, in the hallway, and talking to them, and, and, you know, another great event. And lastly, I also went, right before this, many of us tonight were at the Kennedy Evening of Excellence, and I just wanted to mention that we had to leave early, because we had to come here. And they mentioned before we left that they had over $1 million in scholarships there to give away this year. So, we were just so impressed with that, so, thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Go ahead, Director Beebe.
Been to a meeting of, it's called DDAC for abbreviation, but it's the District Educational Diversity Advisory Committee. And it was a very good meeting, where we got into groups of about four or five, and at each table was a liaison to one of our ethnic groups represented within our schools. And we learned about the role of those liaisons and the work they do. I believe it was Lucinda, who is at my table, who works with the African-American community, and just her sharing some of the difficulties that she works with, with some of the students, to help them get the opportunities that they need, and the supports that they need. And, and her understanding of the African-American culture that lends itself much better than someone who is not of that ethnicity. So, that was really helpful, and then we were brainstorming too, about what do we need to do within our school culture, dealing with... What was, what was that frame?
Implicit bias.
Implicit bias, the biases that we bring as educators and as workers within the school district, not just the teachers, but all around. And there were some really interesting thoughts that were brought out that just gave a greater awareness, so I'm enjoying that. I also had a very sweet experience, I went over to Southwood. Southwood is a unique community of our educators. We have teachers and parays and specialists that work with autistic children, deaf and hard-of-hearing, students with physical disabilities, students who have speech difficulties. And we have now a very unique group of supports. There's a partnership with Frazier that started there, and Frazier is Premier Autistic Support Network for Parents and, and working with autistic children. And also, our Bloomington classes that we have for the autistic children. There's a community preschool there that has room for five of our special needs students, so they can have an inclusion experience. And there is going to be a new program going in at Southwood in two classrooms for Head Start. And while I was there that day, the Head Start people were at a meeting there, walking through, very excited. I was very excited, because their goal, just like our goal, is to help our students become kindergarten-ready. And there was just a lot of enthusiasm, and I think it's going to be a great addition to what we do at Southwood. So, that was very fun, and then also, I took some time to be in each classroom as much as I could, and was able to get to know two of our seniors that were also volunteering at that time. So, it was a great mix of experiences, it's a place where I'm an ambassador, and I would love to just pop in some of those classes and be with those kids again, but just a very positive experience. And I think we have a lot to offer families, no matter where their child is at, and that is a great place to start.
Thank you. Jim?
That was good, I was at a variety of the programs that were mentioned also, but I think the interesting thing is Beth was saying was, Director Beebe was saying, was that we have so many different services. At Southwood, when we heard special needs, and also the equity liaison needs of all of the, of all of our students, it just really emphasizes that we do care for all of our students. A lot of times, newspaper articles are just about K-12, or something about the high, senior high schools, and they just gloss over some of these things. But it's really giving you extra attention to all of the needs that we have, and it's, it's just great that, to quote the late Arlene Bush, "I am so proud to be on the school board at Bloomington."
This is true.
That's all, that's all.
Nothing? I just want to mention that I attended the most recent meeting of the PEC, the Pathway Advisory Committee, and that was our last meeting of the year. And looking forward to starting back up in September. Superintendent?
Thanks. In the past, the school board, the city council, would hold what is called joint, a joint meeting of the city council and school board. Going forward, the, this joint meeting will now be called concurrent meetings of the school board and city council. So, the next concurrent meetings of the school board and city council will be held on Wednesday, May 15th, at 6:00 PM at the Civic Plaza in the city council chambers. Okay, I want to talk about a few partnership developments. First is, I met today with Rep, former Representative Paul Rosenthal, he is with the Governors, Western Governors University, it's an online university, serving 50 states. It's going to go international next year, and we're exploring partnership opportunities with them. Another thing is, I talked to Dr. Joyce Esther today, from the President of Norman Community College, and we're exploring other kinds of community partnerships. And Dr. David Heistad, he has a network of research colleagues, periodically, he holds meetings with these colleagues, he hosts meetings with these, for these colleagues. And we're gonna have a meeting on this Friday at these meetings, researchers share what kind of educational research they're doing, and how they can collaborate on the research. It's a very interesting discussion, and there's a partner, there's a possible partnership with University of Minnesota Rochester and Mayo to help us create a healthcare pathway. We'll be sharing more information with you in the future. That concludes my report.
Any other business come before the board this evening? Hearing none, meetings adjourned.